Tonight, this is a regular meeting of the City of Council Trinidad, Colorado will be held tonight on November Tuesday, November 18th, 2025, 6:00 PM. The City Council Chamber, City Hall 135 North Anamis Street, Trinidad, Colorado, 8:10:82. As meeting protocols, please turn off cell phones, be respectful, take personal conversations into the lobby area. Les, would you mind leading us?
Of course.
(inaudible)
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 Thank you.
Um, just as an announcement, I'm really, really glad to kind of say that Mayor Grego is in attendance tonight via Zoom, but we're glad that she's here and she has asked that I act as the mayor of Pro Tem for this evening, but we are, we are really glad to see you here tonight, Mayor. So, item one, roll call.
DeBono?
Here.
Schu?
Here.
Thurman?
Trillo?
Here.
Ogletree?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Griego?
Here.
Um, item two, approval of the agenda, is there any changes or concerns of note? Hearing none, motion? So, move, Schu, second?
Second.
Ogletree, vote?
DeBono?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Trillo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Uh, item three, policy items and staff report, item A, Fire Department Revenue Report.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Chief Backruck is here to report tonight.
Hi, Mayor.
Hi, Dave, Chief, how are you?
Good, ma'am, how are you?
Good.
Good. Council members, um, I told you that I would come back and give you some revenue updates in order when we initiated that recovery USA bill, our recovery USA bill. So I just put all of our revenue together for the year that we're bringing in, it should be in the door by December 31st. Um, I'll start with wildland billing, um, total wildland billing that we put out, we made three assignments this year, we spent two weeks in California and then two weeks on two different fires in Colorado. Um, total was $136,576.36. So out of that, if you break that out, our engine, the apparatus that we take made $43,149 and some change. The wages, because they pay for our crews that are on the engine and they also pay back billing into the station, fill those positions, uh, we build them $2,969.48. And then travel's a little high, because in California, we have to buy motel or hotel rooms, they don't set up fire camps like they do in Colorado, so we built them out So that's what we're bringing into the city for wildland billing this year, okay? Now, our fire recovery USA billing, um, that's the one that we did the ordinance on. Um, we've built out 15 incidences so far this year since May, okay? Out of those 15, six of those were commercial vehicles, um, 13 of those were motor vehicle accidents and two hazardous material spills, one vehicle fire, and out of all of those 15 calls, which I know you were kind of worried about, two of those were actual residents, both the other 13 were out of spaters, okay? Um, so total bill, we built out $21,158.74. We've received so far $13,570.50 and we're still owed $3,891.62. So the total revenue minus fire recovery USA's portion will bring in $17,462.12. Now, we tagged that to equipment and training, because we no longer have the option of marijuana money, right? So with that money, we were able to buy three thermal imaging cameras, um, and you probably don't know what those are, but they measure heat, they can pick out bodies in a fire, and so my goal is to have each fire position have one on them at all times when we enter fires. One, we'll use them for searching, right, in a fire, um, because we have to do a primary search and then a secondary search, and then the second one, God forbid anything happens, they'll be able to find their way out of that building if something happens. So my goal is to get six of them total for riding positions. And then we were able to buy, um, three more 800 radios. I know we started that project under marijuana money, we were only able to buy nine, so I'm up to 12, so that'll be me five more to buy in the future, where they Bluetooth into the mask, I think we've talked about that before, clear up our comms, okay? Inspection fees, you guys, um, created that ordinance, so far we billed out $4,570 and we've collected $1,980 with that so far. And then we started a new kind of revenue stream, I'm kind of curious to see how it'll go. Um, we had an employee that used to do CPR classes in the city, um, that employee's no longer here, so the Fire Department took that on, um, and so we'll offer CPR classes to anybody in the city that would like them for a cost, we need to reimburse our costs, of course. Um, there'll be some initial upfront costs, because the guidelines are changing this year, but, um, next year, when I bring you revenues, I hope it'll be substantial, we'll see how that program works, okay? So, all revenue in the city for 2025 is $159,108.48. So, you guys got any questions on any of that?
Um, any questions from council?
I just have one, um, have you had any trouble collecting from insurance companies?
Not a bit.
Great.
Yeah. We send them and they pay. It's been phenomenal. This company we're working with is great.
Good, alright.
Yes, sir.
Just a question, I mean, not for the money in that, but how, when you guys send out crews for the wildlife, do you send them out, or are they appointed by the fire crews, or how do they?
So, we have a list, because it's all voluntary, nothing is mandatory, if the guys want to go out on deployment or assignment, they, they say, hey, I'm ready to go, um, we have three engine bosses that can run those crews, and so they kind of pick and choose when they want to go out, and then we make them available to the state, and the state will pull them if they need resources anywhere in the state or across the country. So it's not a mandatory thing.
No, I was just kind of curious then, how they set that up?
Yeah.
So they pretty much ask you, are you going?
Yeah, they just say, chief, I'm ready to go, I say, get your engine boss, see if they're ready to go, and they just form a crew and set themselves up to go make some overtime, because it doesn't cost us anything, we get full reimbursement for all of that.
Yeah, that's really good.
Do you have any questions? Um, Mayor, Mayor, do you have any questions?
No, sir, I don't, I just want to make a statement.
Certainly.
You know, chief is not called chief by accident, most of this was all his idea to generate revenue, and I, I really thank you for bringing that to council, Chief Backruck, because it's amazing, I, I never realized how much money we could garner on those things. Have you gotten any pushback from any of the two locals?
No, ma'am.
Okay, that's good.
No, thank you for supporting my crazy ideas.
It's not crazy, I'm looking at almost $200,000 here, that's not crazy, that's smart.
Right in front of the Fire Department.
So, Chief, thank you so much for being here, and I would just echo the Mayor's sentiment, um, it's really fantastic that you set out to do that, um, I know it took a couple trips here to convince us, but...
That's alright.
Thank you for that. I did have a couple of questions, if I may, the two residents that were billed, that, that is through insurance as well, is it?
Is.
Okay, so, I, I think it's important to say that, say it in a way that's very well recorded, it, that, the locals were still billed through insurance, so it's insurance paying those fees?
That's, that's correct, I mean, you're paying your insurance to cover these costs.
Right. Um, and then, the other question I have, and I, I suspect, uh, this wouldn't be information that you just have, and it's, it's maybe overthinking it, but I'm curious, with putting one of our engines on the road to California, do you have any way to measure wear and tear on the vehicle, shortened, um, replacement time?
We do, and so, our, our Type 6 engine, the one that we put on the road, um, is a 2009 Dodge pickup, and it has 60,000 miles on it, so we're not putting a lot of miles per se, um, and then any repairs that are needed while we're on that fire, the fire pays for it.
Great, okay.
So...
Make sure the turbo goes out there.
Right. (laughing) The only thing is I can't send one of those trucks out there. Oh, and an update on our Type 3, I finally got a picture of the chassis, it finally arrived in Idaho, so three to four months, we should have that new truck.
Nice, and the last question I had, with the CPR classes, I think that's great, that's really looking to scrape every dime we can, so thank you for that. What, what are you going to do to advertise and promote that, because I know some, some companies need annual training, I mean, you know, guests?
Right, and we'll put it out there like full force, we just started this about a month ago, so we're just dipping our feet in, um, but once we get the updated, uh, guidelines and teaching tools, then we'll start putting it out, folks. We've already had some folks reach out to us, and we've got some classes scheduled.
Unless there's further questions, Chief, thank you so much for the update, we commend you for the hard work you've done, it really represents you and your department well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good job. Item four, petitions or communication oral, the public comments section offers an opportunity for any citizen to express opinions or ask questions regarding city services, policies, or other matters of community concern, and any agenda items that are not part of a scheduled public hearing. Citizens will have five minutes for comments, this timeline was established to provide efficiency in the conduct of the meeting and allow equal opportunity for everyone wishing to speak. An immediate response should not be expected, as issues are typically referred to the city's staff for follow-up or research, and then are reported back to council and the individual who initiated the comment or inquiry. Written materials for presentation to council must be submitted to the city clerk as the speaker approaches the podium, and as usual, our illustrious timekeeper will be Mr. Downs, and we have two people... I'm sorry. We have two people signed up for comment tonight. Tom, I can never read your name on this list. Sorry. Tom Murphy, Tom Murphy, everyone.
That, that, yeah, my apologies. Good evening, Mayor, council and staff. I've been filming government for a long time, in the last 14, 15 years, I've been filming the Tourism Board, which is now the Audger's Tax Advisory Board, and I feel like I'm watching the Moody Groundhog Day, um, over and over and over again, I see the same thing happening again and again and again, and it's, I debated whether I should get up and speak when I was, I was like, you don't need to say anything, um, I've spoken enough through the years, but this, this is frustrating, because I see the same thing happening over and over and over again. And, um, and, and I think the problem essentially is turnover, in the time that I've watched it, it's turnover of board members, it's turnover of city councils, turnover of staff, and you start getting some, some traction, it's like playing Monopoly, they get so far, and then it's back to go again, and we start all over again, and you guys are doing it again. And, and Paula and I and Jody Flores, um, got the marketing contract back in 2011, and that was when social media was in its infancy, um, but we were doing some traditional stuff and some newer things. We even created a DVD, um, with Frontline Training, a little booklet, and we had Ray Duran on board, because one of the things that you need to do when people come to town is have people in, in the convenience stores and whatnot and other places that can tell them what's going on in Trinidad. And what happened, Si was the president at that time, and then she resigned and moved on, and we spent, I don't know how many thousands of dollars on this, and, and when the new board came in, they just threw it aside and moved on. And, and when I went looking for the DVDs later, because we made 300, 400, 500 of them, because we were going to pass them out, um, they were gone, and so this is the only surviving copy. But I've seen over and over and over again, this, this keep happening, and, and so, it's like, I, I needed to speak out, because I watched the last meeting, I'm like, and this is just my, my opinion, but this morning, jump ahead, this morning I was at the, at the largest tax advisory board meeting, and I'll tell you this, you've got four really good people that know what they're doing. Um, you don't know, agree, you've got some old school guys and some new school guys, and, and together, I think they can do a good job. And so my advice is that you guys do whatever you need to do for the, for tearing the budget to kick it down the road, um, because there's not a marketing guru, guys, those people don't exist anymore. You can do a marketing campaign on your cellphone, there's not somebody out there that you're going to give all this money to that's going to solve our problems, okay? And this is, again, my opinion, um, when we got the marketing contract, we had a meeting at a hotel, because I tried to get all the, the players together and say, what is our brand, because right now, what is our brand in Trinidad, what are we marketing? The, is it Kit Carson? Well, Kit Carson now has a horrible reputation as far as being politically correct, is it the peak, is it the river, is it, is it our, is it our brick streets, is it our architecture? Uh, and, and there was a, a firm out of Boulder that came to town, and they did a really good job, Signal 6 or something like that, and I filmed all those meetings, and what happened is only a handful of people showed up, and then when they got done with it, and and they came out with the brand, which is the cornice or whatever it is, that's the, the columbarium, everyone was like, who decided that? Well, they didn't participate in, in those conversations. So, my advice is that you kick it down the, the can down the road, that Si and the new, uh, council members make this decision, but if you want to have a really interesting meeting here, call the, the stakeholders together, and, and let's decide on what our brand is. Um, because you, what you're going to get is you're going to get 50 people, and you're going to get 50 different opinions.
One minute, sorry.
And, and so, so that, that's one of the things that I think we need to do, and we're going into dark economic times supposedly, um, I tell you what, having gotten the contract when, when it was proposed, it was supposed to be 150,000, when, when we won it, it was $75,000, but Paul and I and Jody did a lot with $75,000. If you want to invigorate this town, put $100,000 on the table and said, we're going to bring in these different groups that could do the marketing and the traditional and the digital and everything else, and you'll see a lot of people that will show up, because that's a lot of money, for a small businessman like me, you give me a piece of that, I'll do a lot with it. So, so there's some opportunity to, to invigorate, and I think those great, so I said, um, local economic gardening, economic, use our people here, don't give that money to somebody up north that's not even going to come to Trinidad, and we're going to pay to teach them about Trinidad. So, keep it local, we have the talent here. Thank you.
Thank you. Item, sorry, uh, we're on the second speaker, Linda Perry, for, uh, topic is, thank you.
Madam Mayor and City Council, um, we just wanted to come at this time of transition and say thank you. Thank you to all of you for serving our community in the way you do, and we're super appreciative, and we have new members that will be coming on board, but we know it's a hard job, and you've given your time, your talent, you give your conscientious, looking at issues and voting for what's best for our community, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Item five, will be council reports, we'll start with you, Mr. Trillo.
I typed it out. (laughing) It's a long one, not kidding. Last Monday, I attended the Los Anamis County Executive Team Quarterly Meeting, I'm going to give a special thank you to Chief Backruck and Chief Rolls for attending and presenting there, and giving us a good presence in that, in that, on that board. There were many presentations, CDLE, uh, presented on the workforce training and orientation that is going to be available for anyone who is looking to re-enter the workforce or need any additional trainings, resume writings, all of that, um, and that is free to the public. They'll be reoccurring every third Tuesday of the month, starting November 20th, at the Trinidad Warfare Center. Um, there were other updates from Hula, Los Anamis, where Fano County's Health Department, Marcy Keith from the Keith Trinidad Save, and from the, uh, I believe all three Los Anamis County Commissioners had also given presentations there as well. The executive team is, is, it's really a good, uh, group that puts together, so we're not overlapping on resources. So I think it's, it's really, it's really a good board that we have, and that our leaders come together to work together as a team to make this community better. Also, Hispanic Chamber, we've started, uh, they've started planning, uh, for holiday events, uh, business recruitment, and also working on new fundraising ideas to provide scholarship, um, and an update on the seniors, they're doing great, and they're still taking orders for nuts, if anybody needs any, we have another two weeks before we close that down. So, thank you very much, still have to report?
Thank you. You, Mr. Schu?
No, I don't have a report, uh, we have a meeting December 4th in La Habana for the ARCA, so we'll bring you information in.
All right, thank you. Mr. DeBono?
Thank you, Mr. Williamson. I attended the Los Anamis County Veterans Luncheon last Tuesday across the street at Sebastiani Gym, it was well attended, uh, Linda Baron has been putting this on for 26 years, her and her contingency of, uh, support, she's just fantastic, and, you know, it was, it gets emotional, because there's so many veterans that we lose every year, and Los Anamis County is represented by many veterans in the surrounding area, so, uh, years go by so fast that we lose, there's not many WWII veterans, there's hardly any left in, in Los Anamis County, a few Korean veterans, and now the Vietnam veterans are slowly dying as well. Uh, December 3rd, there's a Veterans Coffee Social at the Champions Building on Commercial Street, this is compliments of Kangaroo Coffee, it's from 10 o'clock, 9 o'clock to 11 o'clock, and compliments of Kangaroo Coffee, and they have coffee and tea, and you can bring your family, guests, and friends if you like, so that's the report.
Thank you. Councilman Ogletree?
I got to go to two events this weekend, one of them was sponsored by the Purgatory River Watershed Partnership, um, and I learned a great deal about our river that I embarrassingly did not know, um, but what was very helpful and encouraging for me to hear is that, um, the Watershed Partnership, the Conservancy, and the city are working together really well now, and I think largely because of Ms. Marshall's leadership and how well you worked with Julie Knutson, and there's a lot of trust that's been built up. Um, I learned that THK, which is the, um, engineering firm that those parties are working with to plan the use of the water, is working very closely with Archeterra, who's doing the design for the city as to the river park design, and with the idea that the two will be a seamless thing, it won't be two different, or three different groups who are at odds with each other, everybody will understand what everybody's needs are, and how important it is to preserve the river and to encourage people to use it. We talked at tables about lots of different issues, uh, that people brought up, some of which include unhoused people and, um, working through that issue, and that that's important with regard to the river, so we took a tour, uh, it was great, so I really appreciated being there. The second thing I went to was the Hackathon that the Emergent Campus held, that was designed to bring together a bunch of people who have different ideas that can benefit Trinidad, and in the context of the Emergent Campus, they're getting a lot of tech support and practical advice about how to put forward those ideas, and it was a contest, so one team won $1,000, kind of walked forward with their, uh, ideas, but there were so many good ideas that, you know, it was, it was really fun to see that, and it is exactly what we need to do as a community, is to believe in ourselves and get behind ideas that will bring commerce, um, to our city, better jobs to our city, so those are two really fun things I got to do.
Uh, thank you, I'll, I'll give a short, um, report, and then, uh, Mayor, I will turn it over to you to take the final spot there. So, I've been debating whether or not to bring this up, as, I would say it's not really particularly, um, directly city business, but I think it, it gains so much attention that I think is worth, is worth mentioning, there's been a lot of public concern, especially on Facebook, about, um, the low number of shopping carts at Safeway, and those are an expensive item, uh, when Safeway replaces them, all of, all of us pay for that, so I, I think that it does matter. Um, so that's, that's Safeway's responsibility to hold on to their shopping carts, but, um, I think there's that old expression, it takes a village to return a shopping cart, or something like that, you know, put my money where my mouth is, and this isn't for public accolades, but I think anyone that can return a shopping cart is helpful, I mean, I have two in my truck right now that I'm rehoming from behind First National Bank back here tonight. That being said, um, if you, if people find an unattended shopping cart, it's pretty easy to bring back if you have a truck, and then, I don't know, Tara, but if there's some way that whatever appropriate department can partner with Safeway to try and curb that in some manner, you know, I mean, potentially, I don't know if it's beyond the scope or availability, but city trucks going through town, they might even be willing to return them, but just, just an idea, and I think acting in concert conjunction, we might be able to lessen that, it caused enough, um, concern that I thought is worth mentioning. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Mayor.
Thank you. If any of you, uh, have noticed, I haven't been at meetings for the past six weeks, and it's not because I'm lazy or because I don't care anymore, I came, I, I've developed a systemic health issue that has really truly rocked my world. Everything that I held near and dear to me has changed my lifestyle, everything, and I just want to take this time to apologize to staff, my fellow councilmen, and to the citizens of Trinidad. I didn't want to have my last four, uh, two months in office to end this way. I'm starting a new treatment this week, and hopefully I might be better by December. I, if they have to come and bring me in a wheelchair, I'm going to be there in December and January, so I miss you all, as crazy as that sounds, I really do miss the companionship and the fellowship between city council, citizens, and staff. You're like, uh, an extended family to me, and it's been such an honor to serve on council for eight years, I just hope you will accept my apologies for kind of shirking my duties for the past six weeks, but I will tell you, when I got elected Mayor, I hit up Mr. Williamson, I said, you're the guy that's going to be the Pro Tem, and I made such good decisions, that was a great decision, because he's done an excellent, excellent job. So, Aaron, thank you, city council members, thank you so much, and I appreciate, I've gotten so many letters of support and well wishes and flowers from staff, and I appreciate it all, it's made the days a little bit easier to contend with, so thank you all very much.
Just, uh, thank, thank you, Mayor, just a quick follow-up to that, Mayor, sincerely, I, I'm speaking on behalf of all of council, and I'd say the vast majority of staff, and I would also say constituents, no apology is necessary at all, any, anybody that knows you wouldn't doubt for a moment your commitment to your duty and your love of Trinidad, and anyone that doesn't know that would benefit from knowing you, so, um, thank you so much, and nothing but the best, and we'll continue our prayer and, uh, sending you our best wishes, so thank, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Moving on to item six, consent agenda approval, the consent agenda can be adopted by simple motion, consent agenda will be read aloud prior to vote of the motion, any consent agenda item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of a, of council or individual consideration. Item A, approval of the regular meeting minutes of November 5th, 2025. Item B, reappointment of Lisa Glorioso to the historic, uh, historic preservation commission. C, approval of bills in the amount of $991,722.60. Item D, approval of payroll for November 8th, 2025 through November 21st, 2025, in the amount of $456,127.75. That a motion? So, move. Schu?
Second.
Second. Second, we'll go with Mr. Trillo, and the vote.
DeBono?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Yes.
Ogletry?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes, Item 6A, I have to abstain and I approve 6B, C and D.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 7, Public Hearings. Item A, New Hotel and Restaurant Liquor License Application Filed by CGNJ Tab Incorporated at 1414 Van Buren Street. Who will present on that?
Mayor Protem, that would be me. Do we have Jamie and Naomi Breedlove, please?
It's a hearing, we need an open hearing.
Right, yes, please.
This hearing will be open?
Hello.
Good evening.
Hello, Mayor. Sorry to hear about your situation.
Hello, Mayor.
Hi, guys.
Hi, guys.
Good evening. Would you guys introduce yourselves, please?
Sir, I'm Naomi Breedlove. I am the CEO of CGNJ, also NV Inc., the business on Brown Street. This is my husband.
I'm Jamie Breedlove. I'm owner of CGNJ, part of NV Inc.
I will be the manager at CGNJ.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you all. And what's your name, ma'am, please?
Victoria, sorry. Victoria Avala.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Ms. Lopez, if you would please sue the honors.
You guys will raise your right hand. Do you score in the group of tests when you're about to give us the truth, the truth, the whole truth and not the danger?
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. I'm going to ask you another questions and please let me know if I ask you a question you don't understand. Okay, so, this is a hotel and restaurant liquor license application for CGNJ Tab Inc., correct?
Correct.
And this is going to be a doing business as Grandpa Charlie's?
Yes.
Okay, we'll, we'll get to that in a moment. And what you're, what you're going to be doing is Grandpa Charlie's. This is, the, the address is at 1414 Van Buren Street?
Yes.
In Trinidad?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And the zoning is community, community commercial zoning?
It is.
Okay. And this corporation, CGNJ Tab Inc., it is a Colorado corporation forged on June 3rd of 2025?
Yes.
Okay. Now, do you tell us, please, is it you, Mr. Breedlove, and you, Ms. Breedlove, who make up this corporation?
Yes.
Okay. And I believe you are the directors and the officers, I think the president, Ms. Breedlove?
The CEO.
President, CEO and secretary treasurer, Mr. Breedlove. And the stock ownership, if I understand correctly and well done, is 51% her, 49% his?
It is.
Okay, okay, good. So, you are the majority owner of the corporation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And you guys are the only two people on the corporation, correct? All right, and Ms. Avala, you're going to be a manager?
Yes.
At this location? Okay, good. I'll, I'll have more questions of you in a moment, ma'am. So, council is clear, the landlord is N4J LLC?
It is.
And is N4J also owned by you?
It is.
Okay. So, you're running to yourselves?
We are.
As a business, okay. Again, well done.
Thank you.
And is that company, that N4J LLC, owned only by the two of you?
Yes.
Okay. Lease agreement is contained in your application and I know that it's a five-year lease term with options to renew for the consideration of the amount set forth in the lease agreement, correct?
It is.
Okay. Background checks. The background checks came in as clear. You guys submitted your?
Yes.
Yourselves for, for background checks. Ms. Avala, did you also have the background check?
No.
Okay. That, that's fine. So, let me ask you, if I could, please, when you tell council, what is your business plan for this location? Where are you guys going to be doing it?
So, we're basically an event center. We're 9,600 square feet indoors. There's a hall which people can rent for birthday parties, weddings, anything like that. Restaurant and bar basically in the center of it. Then we have six golf simulators, which are also, they, they also have an arcade mode. So, they're, they're for families, they're for kids. They do soccer, they do T-ball, they do baseball, they do pitching. It's stuff that we want to do with, with what we're doing. It's a venue, it's an event center and it's a family center. We want it to be for families. We want our youth to be able to have a place to go to do something in the community instead of what else is here. There's nothing. My kids never had nothing growing up here. And so, I've been working on this, we've been working on this for five years and it's been, it's been something that we wanted to do here. You know, we, we want it to benefit Trinidad and it's, and we believe it will. You know, we're here for the community, we're here for our kids, we're here for our people. We're not, we're not going to be a bar. That's not what we are. The liquor license is just to add to what we're doing there. So, if someone wants to come have dinner, they could have a drink, do stuff like that. But we want the youth in there. We want them to have a place to go, play. I mean, our hours, I think in the beginning, we're going to start out, we're going to be closing at 10 o'clock. So, we just want a good friendly family place for people to have entertainment in Trinidad. And there's nothing here. I'm sorry, there's nothing here. So...
And if I understand correctly, this is a new construction?
Brand new.
You guys have built a building from the ground up?
We have.
I just want to make sure while we're talking about all this, that you're going to have a, a well-defined area where alcohol can be consumed and you can keep an eye on who's consuming the alcohol, right? So, kids are not going to be drinking.
So, we, the way we have it set up actually is, is two different sections. So, it's going to, where the, where the simulators are, where our youth will spend most of their time on the, on the golf simulators, it's actually a different building inside the building. There's actually a different entrance, there's, the liquor and alcohol is going to be in the restaurant and in the hall area. It's going to be served to people playing golf in the simulators, but they're going to, there's cameras, it's going to be staff, what are we thinking?
It's going to be well manned.
30 to 50 staff. And, you know, a lot of you guys know me. I, I'm, I want this place to be ran, respectful. We want people to be, you know, polite. We don't want people to be outrageous, drunk in front of kids. We don't. And so, our goal from the beginning is to establish that we're not that type of place where you're going to come in and drink what you want, have as much fun as you want. You're not. We don't want that. We want you to come in, have a few drinks, have a good time, enjoy yourself, make memories and go home, you know, safe. Instead of, you know, I'm not going to name other places here with other issues and some of the parts. And it's that.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate that. Did you have a petition circulated in support of your application?
We did.
And if I understand correctly, there were 35 signatures obtained, all were in favor, but one was stricken. You may not know about that, there was no age listed. So, I believe council, there were 34 signatures in, in favor on, on the petition. 34 valid signatures, I, I believe. Were you the petitions, oh, you had petitions?
She did.
You were, okay.
She did.
Thank you, Mrs. Lopez. Okay. Mr. Breedlove, I know you were telling me on the phone this, you were, you were telling me this today. When are you hoping to open?
So, my initial date was December 15th, but I'm still hoping for that. But my contractors are saying beginning of January to the end of January.
I think it's going to be more on the beginning of the year.
Yeah, beginning of January. I'm, I'm optimistic. I want December 15th. I mean, it's been a long process. But a lot of work and a lot of time, I mean...
We are hustling though.
Yeah, we're trying to, we're trying to, so...
And how many employees are you thinking you're going to employ?
30 to 50 is what we're...
Yeah, minimum of 30 if not, no.
Okay, good. For the people, the employees who are going to be serving alcohol, will you have them all be tips trained?
Every single person will be tips trained.
Fantastic.
Even us. What are you even going to do?
So, when you understand you can't sell alcohol or underage people or visibly intoxicating people, you need to train them on this subject. Okay, good, thank you. So, I would ask you, do you guys, as, as part of this, have a working familiarity with, with Trinidad and Colorado liquor laws?
We don't. And that's, she does, that's why we brought her in to run the place.
Okay, good.
I'm going to learn. I'm, I'm already learning, I'm doing a lot of research.
Okay. And you understand, ma'am, what is and is not permissible?
Yes, I've been in the restaurant business for 27 years.
Okay.
Being Trinidadian too, of course.
Okay, great, thank you. And you understand you don't want to have liquor violations, right? If you are given a liquor license by council and you get like the license violations, you run the risk of losing your liquor license. So, so you understand that, right? Okay. And employees can cause you to have liquor violations that can lead to that. Okay, thank you. And, and one other thing I want to make clear, and that is, if there's a law violation on the premises that you become aware of, you have an obligation to report it to the city. You understand that? Okay, good, thank you. You understand also that you have to have your certificate of occupancy, I know you know this very well, but, and that you cannot order or certainly be in the business of, of serving alcohol until you have your license issued by the state and the city.
Correct.
Okay, good. And I just want to make sure that you agree ongoing, if, you know, on an ongoing fashion, if you're approved, to cooperate with all city officials in, in the conduct of this business and the liquor license laws?
Yes.
Fire officials, clerks, attorney. Okay, good, thank you. Is there anything else you would like to tell council before I turn it over to them?
Appreciate you guys. The only thing that I want to share too also, that we're going to be bringing to the community is we're going to be purchasing local as well. So, we're going to be keeping that money here too.
Mm-hmm, nice.
And then we're also bringing, like, trying to bring local artists and bring them...
Support the local community on every aspect that we...
Every aspect that we have.
Fantastic. Thank you all. So, kill deliver, so I think the application is...
Any questions?
I, I had one thing that I've noticed as I was sitting here, I've reviewed this before, but it's jumping out to me now. In some places, is it Naomi? Is it Naomi or is it No-Amy?
It's, it's No-Amy.
It's No-Amy. The legal is No-Amy.
Okay.
But the state does it, it's a mess.
It's a mess, so...
So, in, in some of the documents, it's spelled N-O-A-M-I. And then in the Secretary of State documents, it's N-A-O-M-I. So, I didn't know if that's something we need to address in...
We've been trying to deal with that for a long time.
Yeah.
For everywhere, banking, everything.
Since I joined the military and stuff like that.
Since she was in the military, it's been like, that's been changed.
We'll make note of it. We'll, we'll absolutely make note of it. Thank you. Good catch, council.
No worries. I wanted to tell you that when I was meeting with the Golf Association, they were aware of, of this new business coming and very excited, so I hope, because of the golf simulators. And there's nothing like that at the golf course, there's no driving range or anything like that.
Yeah, you can be there all season.
So, I think it'll be the right time.
So, actually, I have something to say on that. We, we actually, we, my dad's part of this too. This is, Grandpa Charlie's is because my dad's Charlie. And this was his dream. And so, because we own the property, we own NV here in town, Body Job, and we have the capability to do this, that's why we built this. And my dad's is the golf and it's to support our local golf course. And so, our goal is to support our local golf course. So, whatever we do, we haven't figured out what we're going to do, but we're going to benefit the Golf Association by donations or by certain things that we do, events or something that goes on at the, at the, at the restaurant. We're going to help do that. And so, there's some options. They have, are, the ones that are doing the golf simulators, they're going to come at Trinidad Golf Course and they're going to put it on the simulator. So, like, so like the hotels, we're going to offer, if you stay in the hotel and you come in with your card, you could come and play that nine-hole course for free. We're going to give it for free because we want them to say, you know what, this is actually a beautiful course, let's play the actual thing, let's stay a couple extra days in Trinidad, let's play the actual course. So, that, that's, we have ideas. So, that's what we're trying to do. We're golfers, we love golf. So, we want to support our most beautiful golf course we have. It's one of the best in the country. And I love it. So, we need to do something for it. And that's why also, people are like, well, you're going to hurt the golf course. We're not. We're here to help. So...
Thank you. Mr. Yvonne?
Thank you, Jamie.
Hello, you're welcome.
Thank you. And, you know, you gave me a, a walkthrough a little while ago, condensed overview of what you're going to do, what it's going to materialize. And thank you so much for your continued investment in Trinidad.
Of course.
Amazing, with all these hirings, you know, bringing money back and keeping money here. I've known Vicky forever, she's just the best.
She's the best. That's why she's, she's going to run it for us.
Yes, and thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that. Really a great idea.
Thank you.
I hope it really works out well for you.
I appreciate it.
I just want to emulate what everyone else is saying. Thank you for bringing this in. The buzz around Trinidad, they're very excited about this coming in.
Thank you.
Picked a great manager.
I hear that a lot.
She's going to do a meaningful job for you and very knowledgeable.
She is. She knows business, we don't, so...
Thank you so much. Thank you.
At, at risk of overdriving the nail, which I'm going to do, but... Thank you so much, Mr. and Ms. Breedlove, for what you're doing. I mean, you guys have been stalwarts in the business community and who has done business with you knows that. It just shows super commitment to Trinidad and, you know, it's obviously very well thought out and the relationship with the golf course. And hopefully, it's a, a system that builds into the future and benefits the golf course and, and you guys as well. Also, I, I don't think you could have gone wrong with Victoria, she really...
Thank you, thank you.
And then, Mayor Grego?
I, I think that the, the location is absolutely perfect between the bowling alley and the golf course. And I know those golfers itch during the winter to, to play golf, whether it's simulated or the real thing. So, I think, I wish you great success and I appreciate your investment in Trinidad with the capital improvements and the employee opportunities. And I'm so happy that Victoria's back in the restaurant business because I missed her terribly at the holiday and that was my go-to place. So, good luck and congratulations to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the public to speak for or against Item 7A? Hearing none, we'll close the hearing. And then proceed to the vote?
Yes.
All right. I feel call to vote?
I need motion.
Oh, we'll, we'll do a motion prior to the vote. Okay, Schu, is the motion the second?
Second.
Debono? And then, then the vote.
Debono?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Trejo?
Yes.
Ogletry?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
All right. Councilman Ogletry, would you mind reading the findings?
Sure. Before the Trinidad City Council acting in their capacity as the local liquor licensing authority, Trinidad, Colorado, finding a decision in the matter of CGNJ Incorporated DBA Grandpa Charlie's, 1414 Van Buren, Trinidad, Colorado, 81082, new hotel and restaurant license.
license. This matter came on for hearing on the application of CGNJ Inc., DBA Grandpa Charlie's, at 1414 Van Buren in Trinidad, Colorado, for a new hotel and restaurant license before the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, acting in its capacity as the local licensing authority on November 18th, 2025, in City Council chambers and City Hall. The City Council, having reviewed the application and supporting documents and reports of the city clerk and other city staff petitions admitted into evidence at the hearing and testimony taken during the hearing, makes the following findings. One, the neighborhood consists of that area located within the city's corporate limits. Two, Naomi Breedlove, or Na- No-Amy, I was going to say, No-Amy Breedlove, Jaden Breedlove, and Victoria Avila testified in favor of granting the license. No one testified in opposition to the granting of the license. Three, the city clerk's report showed that there are 43 liquor licensed outlets within the neighborhood. Of these, there are eight fermented malt beverage off-premises licenses, one fermented malt beverage on-premises license, one club license, 13 hotel and restaurant licenses, six liquor store licenses, eight tavern licenses, one arts license, two beer and wine licenses, and three lodging and entertainment licenses. Four, the applicant submitted one petition containing regarding, one petition regarding the liquor license application. Petition contained 35 total signatures, of which 34 were valid. Of the 34 valid signatures, all were residents from within the neighborhood, 21 years of age or older, in favor of issuance of a liquor license at this location. No one signed in opposition. No remonstrances were submitted. Five, the applicant, through testimony and other evidence, made a preface showing that the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood are not being met by existing liquor license, and that the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood favor issuance of the license. Six, based on the evidence presented at the hearing and the investigative materials provided for the hearing, the City Council finds that the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood are not being met by the existing liquor establishments, that the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood favor issuance of the license to the applicant, and that the applicant officers are of, are of satisfactory moral character. Therefore, the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, as the local liquor licensing authority, hereby approves the application of CGNJ Inc., DBA Grandpa Charlie's, at 1414 Van Buren in Trinidad, Colorado.
Thank you, and best of luck, Grandpa Charlie's.
Thank you.
Item 7B, new fermented malt beverage and wine liquor license application filed by Loves Travel Stop and Country Stores Incorporated, doing business as Loves Travel Stop, number 1035, at 1001 El Moro Road.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thomas Hackett and Dawn Barrows, I believe. Did I say that correctly?
Barrows.
Barrows. Okay, good. Thank you. Ms. Lovett, if you'd like to...
You're right, hon, do you swear from the testimony? You're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Okay. Okay, good evening. Thank you for being here. Ms. Barrows and Mr. Hackett, you are the, if I understand correctly, the store manager and then the district manager for the applicant here today, Loves.
That's correct.
Okay, good. And more formally, this is Loves Travel Stops and Country Stores Incorporated, doing business as Loves Travel Stop, number 1035?
Correct.
Okay, good. At 1001 El Moro Road?
Correct.
Okay, now, I want to just kind of clarify for the record. I know you two were not responsible for the preparation of the packet, right?
Correct.
You had a chance to look it over, though, before the meeting. You had a chance to look it over, and does it look correct to the best of your information and knowledge?
It does.
Okay, thank you. And, and you're here for, for the applicant, for the corporation, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, good. Thank you. Now, I just want to ask you, this is an application for a new fermented malt beverage and wine off-premises liquor license?
Yes.
Okay, and the intent is to sell beer in line to go?
Exactly.
Okay. And do I understand correctly that the, that the Loves store is open and doing business?
It is.
Okay, good. When did it begin doing business, do you recall?
November 6th.
Okay. November 6th. And that, too, was a new construction, is that correct?
It is.
All right, good. Thank you. Do you, Mr. Hackett, are you responsible for other liquor licenses with Loves as the regional manager?
I...
Okay. Have you done this before? Have you done...
I have not.
Okay. Okay, good to know.
Good learning.
But I understand. Welcome to the world of liquor licensing. I want to ask you, do you understand that the zoning classification for this location is community commercial zoning?
We do.
Okay, good. Thank you. And so, we're clear, Loves Travel Stops and Country Stores Incorporated is an Oklahoma corporation registered to do business in Colorado, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And how, do you know how many liquor licenses Loves has in the state of Colorado?
We have 20 currently.
Okay.
So, this would be 21.
And how many states does Loves do business in?
42.
Okay. Because you were telling me earlier, not all the Loves have liquor licenses.
It all depends on the, you know, city council.
Okay, I understand. And for the record, I know this is contained in your, the application, but the corporation is made up of corporate officers, directors, and shareholders. Shane Morton is the president, Spencer Haynes is the executive vice president and CEO, and Amy Guzzi is the secretary, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then 25% stock ownership by each Gregory Love, Frank Love, Jennifer Love Meyer, and Laura Love, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so there's a Love family, and they own the stock for Loves. Okay, good. Thank you. The landlord for this premises is Rose Rock Holdings LLC, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And they are the landlord for several of the Loves locations?
Yes.
Okay. And I know you may not have been familiar with the lease prior to this, but it's an extended lease with several options to renew for the consideration of the amount of money set forth in that document, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you have the right to possession, obviously, and the landlord's permission to sell alcohol, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so, the background checks involve having the corporate officers on a master file with the Department of Revenue, is that your understanding?
Yes.
So, they, they have their backgrounds on record with the Department of Revenue, and all of them are of good moral character, correct? Okay, good. Thank you. Now, I want to ask you, do you know that there was a survey, or excuse me, a petition that was circulated in support of your application?
Yes.
Okay. And I believe that Jeff Thompson is the one who circulated the petition?
Yes.
Okay. He's, oh, right, I met Mr. Thompson earlier. Okay, good. Thank you. He's in the audience here. On the petition, and please let me know if you don't know this, but I believe there were 35 signatures obtained. Of those 35, three did not express a preference.
Yeah.
Okay, right. Do you check in favor or in opposition? And then of the 32 valid signatures who expressed a preference, none were in opposition. Is that your understanding?
That's true.
Okay, good. Thank you. So, please, if you would, tell counsel, I want you guys to have a chance to talk to counsel, how many employees do you guys currently employ at this location?
We currently employ 40 on the store side.
40 on the store side, and 95 overall with the restaurants.
Okay. And how many will be in charge of, not in charge, but will be handling the sale of alcohol? 40?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And I know you were telling me, both of you, before the meeting, that you, your employees receive training on alcohol sales, correct?
Correct.
Okay, would either of you want to elaborate on that, if you would, please?
So, we do annual training, which is sent through their, what we call CBTs. We send that out annually, and everybody takes quizzes on them, and we also communicate it constantly in our stores, our location.
Yeah, so it's a learning management system. CBT stands for central-based training. So, it's forced out to them every single year, so that then they get retrained. Every time that they, we hire a new employee, it's part of their, their training. Just, obviously, we want to make sure that we fully follow any, any laws.
Okay, good. So, they receive the training at the beginning of their employment with Loves, and then every year that they're employed.
Sure.
Okay, good. Thank you. As I was asking the people, the applicants, before you, you understand that you're responsible for your employees and the sale of alcohol?
Yes.
And violations by then amount to a violation for the company and the licensor?
Correct.
Okay, good. You also understand you can't have anything to do with alcohol until you have a license in hand, if you're approved by counsel. You understand that?
Yes.
Okay, good. You are presumed to have a knowledge of Colorado and Trinidad liquor laws, particularly no sales of alcohol to minors or visibly intoxicated persons. And do you agree to cooperate with city officials in an ongoing fashion?
Absolutely.
Okay. And, you know, among other things, you've already done in terms of alcohol enforcement and things of that nature.
Yes.
Okay, and you understand, too, you have an affirmative duty to report law violations. Even if no one necessarily calls the cops, if you know there's a law violation on a premises, once you have a liquor license, you have an obligation to let the city know.
Yes.
Okay, good. Anything you would like to tell counsel or...
I don't think so.
Okay. You covered most of it.
Yeah.
Good, thank you. Wow, is there something I forgot? I don't...
I don't think so.
Okay, all right. Good, thank you.
Is there, you ready for questions, Les?
Yes, I submitted to counsel.
All right. Do you have any questions?
Just want to quickly, like, how much are you planning on carrying? Four-foot sections, eight-foot sections?
So, we do two of our cooler doors, so that'll be total of six foot by six foot?
Yeah.
So, that's about pretty much, which is just what you'd be selling there?
Yes.
Any questions?
Just a very big thank you from Trinidad to you guys coming here. It's on our economy and the community. We appreciate it.
Yeah, we definitely feel welcome.
It's beautiful here.
Yeah.
The sunrises are gorgeous in the morning. I'm enjoying that very much, so, thank you. Beautiful old town.
Mr. Brown? Again, thank you for your, my investment in this area. Appreciate it.
And the donuts.
We just...
It's got our bird. Yeah. The donuts are very good.
They're gifts for some reason, a couple days ago, so...
I have one question for you, Mr. Downs. On the findings that I was given, it says that petition contained 35 total signatures, of which 26 were valid. So, I'm trying to make sure, is it 32 were valid?
26?
26.
Okay, 26.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I added incorrectly. I, some may be from out of the city, but 26.
The three that you were talking about are the ones who did express a preference.
Correct.
Okay. That's all.
26.
Thank you. I just wanted to mirror what the rest of counsel said. Thank you for your investment in Trinidad. I think it's a positive, and it's good to see. I did have a couple of questions for you, if I may.
Yes, sir.
And, sorry for putting you on the spot. What is the threshold for the number of signatures?
There, there's no minimum amount. It is a sampling of people in, you know, since the, the areas, the entire city of Trinidad, it is just getting a sufficient number of signatures to get a sampling of the desire of inhabitants of the community. There's no minimum, no maximum.
And I'm sorry, I may have missed it, but who circulated that petition?
The gentleman in the audience, Jeff Thompson?
Okay. And then, if you would find it appropriate, I frequently get questioned after we have a liquor license hearing of people that are, I would say, very much questioning the process. Could you explain it for the record as to how it works? I mean, generally speaking, if the conditions are met, it's...
Exactly. Because of the, the business of selling alcohol is something that people have a right to do if they meet the criteria, it is appropriate to grant a liquor license when those criteria have been met. And, and the criteria are that the, they have demonstrated that it is the desire of the inhabitants of the community from the petition to have another liquor license, that the needs of the community are not being met by the current liquor establishments are not met, and that the applicants are of good moral character. And I do want to say, I know that, like, it can be kind of hard to say that the needs of the community are not being met by the current number of, you know, of liquor licenses that exist in the community. However, if you go to Loves and you want to get beer to go, you know, then, and if you can't do it, then really, the needs are not being met if they're not given a liquor license. I didn't word that very well, but you could have, you know, 50 of this type of liquor license in the community, and Loves should be entitled to do what Alta is able to do or what Maverick is, is entitled to do, right? There would be no reason why Loves would not be able to do that. So, anyway, it is appropriate for counsel to issue a liquor license when those criteria have been met and those things have done, so I...
I just wanted to be a part of the record and discussion. I waited for the second one, but it obviously germane to both. Then, the last question I had, and I get this frequently after these as well, is there is some armchair lawyers...
Yes, there are.
That always present.
Yeah.
I think, I think it's worth mentioning their credentials if you're going to sign them.
Right.
That mention that it is the legal standard for only one liquor license to be issued to one holder, and so, there's always any objection that a chain...
Oh, yeah.
Can you explain how that occurs?
Well, it's a business model for a company like Loves, right? They do, they're in the business of selling gas and food, donuts, you know, all the things that people want when they go to a convenience store, and that obviously includes, you know, being able to buy beer. And to go, it's off-premises consumption, but it's, it's the business model for them. And I think, well, I'm pretty confident that every Loves that is doing business in the state of Colorado probably has this type of liquor license with them. And it would be, it would be really like a, kind of a shot across their bow if there was a community who said, no, we're not going to let you do that. You know what I mean? It's a really good cliche, but...
Again, I just wanted to be discussed and part of the record, so, sorry, sorry for extending your hearing. And Mayor, do you have questions?
I want to make a statement. First of all, you're not sorry, but you love to talk. I've seen on social media as well, people are upset because Loves isn't really in the or area of Trinidad, but I would like the citizens to understand that Trinidad is unique for a couple of reasons. We've got an interstate that comes through this community. In 1995, I did a survey, there was 8 million people that came through Trinidad in, in 1995, and I'm sure Loves has the, the current numbers, but when you say we're not being served, you're talking about those 8 million-plus people that go through that interstate. We're very fortunate, very fortunate, to have that interstate coming through Trinidad, because if you look at the towns south and north of us that don't have that interstate, we're doing a lot better than they are, and I'm, I'm really happy that Loves is, is contributing to our economy. You know, people don't understand in a small area like Trinidad how important those, those jobs are at Loves and at the Grandpa Charlie's. And I mean, it's not, it's a drop in the bucket for big metro areas, but it is very important to us. And I went by and looked at the store the other day, it's beautiful. You did a great job, and I want to thank you. I, I have a question, and this is for Mr. Downs.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I understand, like, when you're in a restaurant, you have to be X amount of years old to serve alcohol? Is there any stipulation as to how the clerk has to be to chat with somebody else?
Well, go ahead.
Yeah, so they have to be 21 to serve.
Okay.
Good.
And you have enough employees to do that?
We do, we have 21.
Okay. I, I just needed clarification.
I think there are exceptions in restaurants. I think that they're, they could be 18 years old, but...
For us, it's the 21.
It's 21, okay.
It's a smaller city, yeah.
Wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Any further questions? Thank you guys for coming up.
Appreciate it.
All right. Anyone in the audience to speak for or against Item 7B? A hearing is done. We will close the hearing. And this time, I'm going to ask for a motion. Trillo? And then Shu for the second, and the vote?
Debono?
Yes.
Truhill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Gregor?
Yes.
Councilman Ogletree, if you don't mind reading the findings?
Before the Trinidad City Council acting in their capacity as the local liquor licensing authority Trinidad, Colorado, findings and decision in the matter of Love's travel stops and country stores in DBA Love's travel stop 1035, number 1035, 1001 El Moro Road, Trinidad, Colorado, 81082, new fermented malt beverage and wine license. This matter came on for hearing on the application of Love's travel stops and country stores in DBA Love's travel stop, number 1035, at 1001 El Moro Road in Trinidad, Colorado, for a new fermented malt beverage and wine license before the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, acting in its capacity as the local licensing authority on November 18th, 2025, in council chambers in City Hall. The City Council, having reviewed the application and supporting documents and reports with the city clerk and other city staff, petitions admitted into evidence at the hearing and testimony taken during the hearing, makes the following findings. One, the neighborhood consists of that area located within the city's corporate limits. Two, Thomas Hackett and Don Burrows testified in favor of granting the license. No one testified in opposition to the granting of the license. The city clerk's reports show that there are forty-three liquor license outlets within the neighborhood. Of these, there are eight fermented malt beverage off-premises licenses, one fermented malt beverage on-premises license, one club license, thirteen hotel and restaurant licenses, six liquor licenses, eight tavern licenses, one arts license, two beer and wine licenses, and three lodging and entertainment licenses. Four, the applicant submitted one petition regarding the liquor license application. The petition contained thirty-five total signatures, of which twenty-six were valid. Of the twenty-six valid signatures, all were residents from within the neighborhood, twenty-one years of age or older, in favor of issuance of a liquor license at this location. No one signed in opposition. No remonstrances were submitted. Five, the applicant, through testimony and other evidence, made prima facie showing that the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood are not being met by existing liquor outlets, and that the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood favor issuance of the license. Six, based on the evidence presented at the hearing and the investigative materials provided for the hearing, the City Council finds that the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood are not being met by the existing liquor establishments, that the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood favor issuance of the license to the applicant, and that the applicant officers are of satisfactory moral character. Therefore, the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, as the local liquor licensing authority, hereby approves the application of Love's travel stops and country stores Inc., DBA Love's travel stop, number 1035, at 1001 El Moro Road in Trinidad, Colorado.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ogletree. Love's, we really appreciate you guys being here tonight, and thank you, and best of luck. We did both of those without the executive session.
Yeah, thank you for that. Ms. Marshall asked me if we've ever had to do any of those. I said, "Oh, yeah, many times."
Item eight, unfinished business, which we have none, and that leads us to item nine, miscellaneous business, consideration of arnimilar to the planning, zoning, and variance commission. Thank you for the... That's fine. We had a good interview, and I'll consider a motion?
So move.
Ogletree, and then second?
Second.
Shu, the vote?
Debono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Truhill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Gregor?
Yes.
Item B, consideration of the purchase of one 2025 Caterpillar 420 backhoe for the gas department.
Good evening, Mayor. Good to see you. So I'm here to ask for your approval to purchase a 2025 Caterpillar backhoe. We have one now that is in need of repairs, and over the last two years, we've spent $10,000 for repairs on the backhoe. The axles went out about two months ago, so we got an estimate of $19,183.15 for repairs on that. So given the age of the backhoe and the substantial repairs that it's needed, I strongly recommend we consider trading the 2001 case backhoe in and getting it re modeled. Wiker Equipment Company is willing to take the trade in. We got a government pricing through them from Sourcewell of $132,823.83 for a new backhoe. They're willing to give us, and I have an error on this council communication, the trading value they're willing to give us is $14,400. So it is a net selling price of $118,423.83 for a new backhoe. I believe this is the best way to move forward in the department for public safety and stuff. Right now, we're trying to borrow a backhoe as we need it, and it's kind of difficult doing that when we need it, it's not available, and we're calling around trying to find something to get to use. So the backhoe is twenty-five years old and has quite a few hours on it. Hour meters show you over 5,000 hours, but it is not working. I don't know how long it hasn't been working, so we don't have actual hours on that.
Do we just have one backhoe?
Yeah.
For all the departments?
No, just the gas department has one backhoe.
And the other departments still have one?
Water department has two, I believe, and power and light has one.
Steve?
And the street department has one.
Sorry.
Street department also has one.
How much does it cost the city each day if you do have to do that, let, you know, lease one out?
Well, we're not leasing. We're trying to borrow from the other departments.
From the other departments here?
Yeah. We're using, mostly using the water department to use the power and light on occasion when they're using it. Some of the instances that we're having is when I'm in an emergency, when a meter gets hit. Usually, the way it works, a meter gets hit, we get a call in either to me or to the foreman or dispatch. And as soon as we know what the situation is, we dispatch a backhoe because we know we're going to have to dig up the street or the alley in order to shut that off. That's the only way to shut those off. We have to dig them up, shut them off at the tab. So the way I look at it is time is of an essence at that point. We're looking at public safety, life and property. So the quicker we can get that gas shut off, and also we have escape gas into the atmosphere, the better the public safety is for the public. So when we're having to borrow one, I'll call the water department. They got both of theirs used. We call the power and light. They might have theirs used, and there's nobody at the shop to let us in. So we're just wasting a lot of time trying to get a backhoe, trying to borrow one like that.
Did we buy this backhoe new or did we buy it used, the one that we're currently using?
We bought that new.
Okay, so we've been using it?
We purchased that in 2000. It's an actual 2001. We've been using that, so it's twenty-five years now. And we had repairs done. Our fleet did the repairs about two years ago. We can't find the exact records that they did repairs. I know it was, the drive train went out in it. I don't know what that consisted of. We spent around $10,000 to get that repaired in-house. And now we have the axles go out in it about two months ago. So the new foreman at the fleet suggested we get that repaired out so we could get a warranty on it, which came back at $19,000 and change. And I just think that's a lot of money to keep pouring in it. We have an old engine, old transmission. I'm not sure what's going to go on in it next.
And it's something that we budgeted for, correct?
Yes, I have it in my budget. We actually did budget. I was putting it into next year's budget, working on the budget this year. I was going to do next year's budget. Talking with the companies that are selling it, there's going to be about a 10% increase in pricing after January 1st. So I'm looking at that. That's about $11,000 that we could save if we purchase it this year. And I do have the money in this year's budget from another line item that it was not used, so I could get that money. So the money is there in the budget. Yes.
Well, Steve, just another question, I mean, on the backhoes. Are you up to date on what the other backhoes are doing? I mean, are there any that are going to be, need to be replaced soon to what any of the other departments are? Are they all working functionally?
The one water department has given us to use, it's a 2000 also. So it's fairly old, and I don't know what the condition of that is.
But the other one, it's pretty good shape?
The power and lights, it's about twenty-some years old. It's an early 2000 model also. And the street bridge has a newer one, I believe it's two or three years old.
We bought that one.
Yeah, that one's not too old that they're using. So I don't know what the condition of those older ones are. I don't know what the...
We might be looking at more replacements if we go.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, I think they're going out. They're all twenty years old.
Yeah.
Do you, do you have any questions?
It's still just processing. I've just always been curious, because I know we use Sourcewell and we use... Is there other companies? I've just always been curious. Is there other companies out there? Because you always hear these...
Sourcewell is a company that gives us government pricing, so they go out and price this and give us a government cheaper price.
We use Sourcewell for the purchasing because it's government supply. I go directly to it. Like, we're always using Wagner, and I'm just wondering if that is our lowest option?
Wagner is one of the only companies that uses Sourcewell. The other companies don't. Not all companies use Sourcewell because I've been told that we're purchasing equipment cheaper than they could purchase it. So we're buying it through them, through Sourcewell. We've had that on other equipment, like, we bought a dump truck through Sourcewell, and I can't remember the company. It was out of portable that sold us the dump truck, and when the guys delivered it, they're telling us, "You guys are getting a cheaper price than we can buy it directly."
And Wagner's given us what kind of warranty on this?
Wagner's, we talked them into giving us a longer warranty. It's an eighty-four month or 2,000 hour warranty.
That's a lot higher than what we've been getting.
That's a, yeah.
That's a good warranty.
It's a longer warranty than ours. So they're willing to set, throw that warranty in there also.
So I don't have a question per se, but I do think, I'm going to try and keep this sharp, Mayor. I do think it's worth mentioning. I mean, we're going from a case to a, anybody that knows equipment, that's a significant step up in quality. We shouldn't see better performance and longer longevity, I would think, unless, I mean...
I think we got good use out of our case that we have, but yeah, I agree, cat is probably a better...
Secondly, having recently sourced yellow iron, I mean, I think really, using a Sourcewell, you guys could probably, although I suspect it wouldn't be legal, open a dealership at this cost. So I think that's well done. My concern was that it is fitting into the budget, but that is...
Yeah. I've talked with Tara and I've talked with Sarah. We've had discussions about this, and it does fit in my...
And I know you answered it. I'd ask it, but I just wanted to ask again. But yeah, the other thing to say, I mean, if we are going with cat, it doesn't matter which cat dealership you buy it from. They're all going to be priced uniformly, whether you go with Wagner or some others. So I think this is a good deal. How we need it is Councilman Shu said. Mayor Gregor, do you have any questions?
Music to my ears. It's in the budget, so I'm happy with that. So is eighty-four months for a warranty pretty standard?
That's pretty good.
No, no. They usually give you a sixty-month warranty, 3,000 hours. We were able to negotiate an eighty-four month with 2,000 hours. So I wanted the longer tenure and the hours we put on it.
Right, sure. It makes sense to me. You know, I think it's a necessity at this point. When you talk about all the work that the city departments are doing with upgrading utilities, I can't see one department borrowing from another when there's, all of the departments are so busy, especially with the church and combat street projects. So thank you, thank you, Steve. Good job.
If I may, Steve, I have one further question. So with that new equipment, do we, how is the maintenance going to be handled in relation to how that affects the warranty?
So, yeah, I talked with Stephen Dow at the fleet, and we're going to do routine maintenance. We're going to use OEM parts when he does it, like oil changes and stuff like that. Anything that's requiring repair, we'll get sent back. Either they'll come down and repair it, or we'll take it to portable and have it repaired.
And us doing OEM oil changes, that's been cleared with them?
The warranty will be still effective, yes. We'll refer to all of that.
Thank you for being...
As long as they use the OEM parts.
And I suppose you'll source them directly from Wagner, anyway?
He set up some kind of, I talked to him, I can't give you the details on it. He set something up with OEM parts that we're getting those also at cost, so we're getting those actually cheaper than we're getting aftermarket parts.
All right.
I don't know how we do it.
Thank you so much.
He did tell me he was doing that.
Mr. Gutierrez, who runs our fleet department, is starting to work on each one of these purchases and helping to negotiate and set up the warranties so that we get the best deal. So I commend Mr. Crowe for working with Mr. Gutierrez to do that.
That's good. We've already talked about all of that and how the warranty works and what we can do with...
Yeah, so it's good you're following up on that and making sure that the dollars are well spent, so thank you. That being said, is there any further questions from council?
Did you get the formats?
So is there a motion for Item 9B?
So moved.
Second.
Being Trillo and Shu, and then the vote?
Debono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Truhill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Gregor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
First reading of an ordinance repealing and replacing Section 7-46, City Lodging Tax Fund, and repealing Section 7-47 Lodging Tax Advisory Board in its entirety of Chapter 7, Finance and Taxation, Article 7, Lodging Tax of the Trinidad Municipal Code, and setting a public hearing for consideration of said ordinance at 6:00 PM on December 16th, 2025.
Introduction.
Introduce.
Who will introduce this?
I will.
A motion?
A motion.
Many have... All right. Second?
Second.
Okay.
I presume, I guess, is there any discussion prior? Can I vote?
I just wanted to put into the records some of the background information of why we're bringing this forward.
We'll place a vote on hold while we hear the...
Thank you. The voters of Trinidad approved a 3% lodging tax and associated ordinance by initiative in the municipal election of November 6, 2001. This created the Tourism Board and the associated parameters for the administration of revenues limited to the use for marketing and advertising, and it at that time excluded capital expenditures. The ordinance was amended in April 2023 to broaden the fund's use, to fund parks and recreation facilities and programs, tourism and convention-related staff and expenditures, art and cultural events, and certain capital expenditures related to tourism. Since that time, it's become challenging to align the costs. With the percentages set forward in the ordinance, it was very strict in setting forward the percentages of how money could be allocated. Additionally, the tax was increased to 6% by voter approval on November 5, 2024. However, lodging tax receipts have been reduced from expectations due to fewer overnight stays in the community. So staff brought this forward in a work session in July, received feedback from council. We've pursued a budget for the tourism fund that takes away those percentages and requires council, should you move forward in adopting the budget, to look at a different format for how we allocate that money. In addition, part of the discussion, it appears that a majority of city council no longer wishes to delegate the administration of the lodging tax revenues to an oversight board and instead desires city staff to administer the funding. So we've presented an ordinance that meets with those requirements. Should mention also, and it wasn't in your council communication, that we're moving to a pay-as-you-go model with the tourism funding, which was something council was adamant they wanted to see. So I understand you're setting it for public hearing on the 16th. Before you vote, is, are we comfortable with putting it forward in this format?
So is there any questions from council?
Some comments have been made in this meeting, and I think that the only input that I wanted to bring over from work session when we talked about this is that I think it is important that local people have a voice in this. And with it completely delegated to staff, I think people might feel that that's something uncomfortable to them. That being said, I also think that we do need professional marketing. It's, I think, generally, it's not enough that we know little about ourselves as Trinidadians and as the city itself. What we have to know beyond that is what we have to say to the outer world to make them come here. And just, a lot of times, when it's just local voices, that part of, that concept's not addressed. And I am hopeful that placing it in your hands, that you will look for that kind of messaging, but otherwise, I'm okay with that.
Any other comments? No. No?
Just a little statement. These boards are created to go through and direct us and where we should be able to go in advisory... direct us and where we should be able to go in advisory positions. And at this point, I just wanna just, they can be created at any time and they can be removed at any time, when they have a need and when they don't have a need. Right now, I just feel that there's not a need for it at this exact moment. And I do think that in future time, when we clarify what the true need and the desire of that board and their responsibilities are, that, that hopefully that council will create that board and they will put it through in clear, concise direction. Cause as of right now, reading through the ordinances and their responsibilities, I, I do feel sorry for them because I do feel that they have not been able to do what they needed to do. It wasn't as clear as we needed it to be. So I think that by moving forward on this, I could actually benefit the community by doing right by them and creating a new ordinance and a new board later on down when we are in a better financial position for one. Two, um, knowing what we actually need in the community. So, thank you.
I, I appreciate Councilman Trill's prepared comments. Um, I don't have prepared comments, but you have comments. That, that being said, um, it's all of our responsibility here to ensure that, um, tax dollars, hard-earned dollars from constituents in this town are spent to the best effect and effect for, for everybody here. And that's what's really heartening tonight to see. I mean, every, everybody here tonight is here for various reasons, but ultimately it boils down to, in, at some level, you have the best interest for Trinidad in mind. Now, those best interests for Trinidad can be, um, you know, maybe discussed and potentially even argued, but ultimately we all have the same goal and that's, that's why city, um, local government, I think, is, is really amazing. I would say, um, and I don't remember who said it, but, um, there is a concern for, I think it was you, Councilman Ogletree, that you said there's a concern for public input. And again, while it may seem convoluted and a long way around it, we, we do maintain an open channel of, uh, public input every single meeting, and I know you know that. But I think it's important to just remind the public that is here and thank you for, uh, Tom, um, bringing that forward tonight. That being said, this, this decision is one of, I think, necessity for multiple reasons. Budget has been alluded to, allocation and effective use of the dollars is the other reason. And, um, obviously, I think it's incumbent on all of us to work together to, to increase, uh, overnight stays in Trinidad, increase our economy. That's, we all desire that, so. You know, hopefully we can work together and find a way to focus this dollar stream in a way that will benefit Trinidad. I would say with solid leadership, I think that we can. So thank you for what you're doing. With that, we've introduced, had a motion and second where we are ready for a vote, but I would say.
Hold it.
I'm so sorry, Mayor.
I was testing if you were listening.
I knew I was in for it when you said prepared statement. You were gonna throw it off and you were gonna forget about it. But I have to hold you accountable, my friend. I'm just kidding. But let me, let me put my two cents worth in because I was on the original tourism board when it was first formed way back when, god, twenty, thirty years, twenty years ago. And I think it was twenty twenty, twenty, no, two thousand. But anyway, that board, you had to be, in order to be a part of that board, you had to have certain expertise in the tourism, uh, economy of Trinidad. I was there because of Wendy's. We had motel motel people. We had, um, uh, welcome center people. So if we were able to, to find out what the trends were and that's how we spend our money. That being said, our original budget was only twenty-five thousand dollars and like with everything else, things have changed. Our, um, our revenues have, have increased quite a bit. We only had, I think, twenty-five thousand dollars that first year that we grew into taxes, but I for one, with all the changes and all the issues we've had with the tourism board, and I think Mr. Murphy mentioned that, the turnover, we have had more turnover on that board than we've ever had on any other board within the city. So I think we have to get smart and, and try and, uh, oh, what am I trying to say? To try and perfect that system. But I do think it's vital, especially for the people that have, uh, a stake in the tourism business in Trinidad, to voice their opinions about what works and what doesn't. Because they know, they know what works and what doesn't, so. And I think the pay-as-you-go thing is an excellent idea. It worked for the marijuana tax revenue, and I think especially as lean as that budget is, I think we need to have that so we make sure we get within the budget. But I think we have to make changes. What that change is, I don't know, but, um, I think it's, we're going in the right direction.
Thank you, Mayor. My apologies for, for getting to calling you.
Nah, that's okay. I'll just slide.
Alright, so, uh, we are, we are ready for the vote. The last thing I'd say is this, at this, there will be another opportunity for public input at the hearing, so, um, I think that's a good level of due diligence too. With that, I'll call for the vote.
Chu?
Yes.
Trill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Greggo?
Yes.
Item ten, reports by city manager and city attorney.
Who got this one? What do you mean to you? I promised I wasn't gonna do that.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating certain sums of money, and an important one in that.
Exactly.
Uh, out of the revenues of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, to defray and meet the liabilities of the city of Trinidad for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-six, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Said ordinance being termed the annual appropriation bill for the twenty twenty-six fiscal year and setting a public hearing on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-five at six P M.
Introduce.
Yes. Who will introduce?
I'll introduce.
Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Proten. This is the very important bill that allows us to be able to spend money next year. So this is set for public hearing on December sixteenth. This ordinance is a request to appropriate money in each fund. That includes the general fund, power and light, water, gas, sewer, economic development fund, capital projects fund, lottery fund, and tourism fund. Total expenditures appropriated for twenty twenty-six would be seventy-eight million, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Is there any questions before we proceed? Mayor Greggo?
No, I, I just want to advise, um, council and, and the audience that I did get a copy of the budget and I looked at it pretty thoroughly over the past couple of days. And more importantly, I trust Ms. Marshall because she's worked so hard. Every time I tried to call her, I can't talk, "Mira, I'm working on the budget." So I know she did the very best, you know, and, um, budget neutral, Tara. And I think, I think it's, you know, it's not great, but it's, I think it's, we have to just take a collective deep breath and just make adjustments. We don't know, you know, we can't predict the future. We're trying, but we can't. But I think you did it, you and Steph did an excellent job.
I definitely want to commend the staff and just point out that this budget is just under ten million in expenditures less requests than last year, so we've reduced the overall city budget by.
Budget neutral.
Budget neutral.
Alright, with that, um, we're ready for the vote.
Tabono?
Yes.
Chu?
Yes.
Trill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Greggo?
Yes.
I have to say, I'm very, very proud of city staff and, um, in effect, uh, happy to be part of this. We've passed, we've managed to pass an annual appropriation bill without a city shutdown, so. Item ten, reports by city manager and city attorney. Who's going first?
Go ahead.
Okay, sure. Um, so really busy a couple of weeks. Our H R department completed open enrollment last Friday. Of the one hundred and forty-nine full-time employees, we had one hundred and thirty-six sign up for insurance. So those are the exact same numbers from last year. Those additional thirteen employees are insured through their spouse's insurance, so. We feel assured and I just want to point out that I think people's ability to stay insured this year in great part was for council's, um, gracious, um, acceptance of doing a stipend this next year. So every full-time employee will receive a thousand dollars throughout the year, you know, throughout the year, two hundred and fifty each quarter. And every part-time employee will receive five hundred. And this goes to that, those employees' ability to stay insured and to defray those insurance costs. And just to remind the public, we did have a seventy-one percent increase, so council's made it possible for the hundred and thirty-six to sign up and the rest to remain insured through other insurance avenues. So thank you for that. I want to remind, uh, council that the tree lighting for city hall, our beautiful tree, which we get so many compliments for throughout the holidays, is happening next Friday, November twenty-eighth at five fifteen out on the lawn of city hall. Um, the next day will be the annual parade of lights down Main Street at six P M. Please come out for both events. And just a reminder that your city staff will be sponsoring and participating on a float in the parade, so, um, if you see us, be sure to give us a big wave. We're excited about that. I haven't actually been given the theme or the reveal, but in the next few days, uh, they're very, we're very excited about it though, so I'm excited to see what turns out. Um, you may have noticed that convent and church project has started gearing up. We're starting to see the streets. I want to once again compliment our engineering and public work staff. Uh, they are having, they've established weekly meetings. It includes the developer for the Holy Trinity apartments, includes the contractor on the job. And we have a communication that goes out, out of that meeting every Monday to local businesses and the church, and we are coordinating. So far, several weeks in, it's been a pretty successful partnership between all entities. Um, today, we delivered the twenty twenty-six budget appropriation for first reading and setting of the ordinance, so excited to have that go to public hearing on December sixteenth. If adopted that evening, we will make our, um, budget filing with DOLA, Department of Local Affairs, which is due in January. Also want to remind you, we'll be setting the mill levy at the December second meeting, which is another part of our budget process. That's done through resolution, so we'll be bringing you that in two weeks. We will have a slight change in the numbers between tonight and the final adoption. We'll get these final insurance numbers that are coming in, so, um, we think we're actually gonna have a little bit more savings through the insurance selections that employees made. So we're working with C E V two now and we'll have that in the next week or so, so that appropriation will just vary slightly. The second piece is Ms. Card and I will be working on the depreciation schedule for all of our capital assets and setting that for the next year. So those two things may offset each other, depreciation, may be offset by insurance or vice versa. Uh, so we'll have that little bit of update on the work session, final work session on the budget, to update you on those numbers. Um, wanted to give another reminder to get out and support our local businesses. We've got this excellent Christmas cash program going on. If you haven't brought your receipt in, please bring your receipt in to the welcome center of the library. There's space to create our city hall and get that Christmas cash and go back out and spend it in businesses. Um, I want to once again commend our city staff. Over sixty businesses are participating in this, in this local shop, local campaign, so a lot of effort's gone into it. We, we're excited to see. Everyone should go in at least one business they've never been in, um, and use some Christmas cash. In case you haven't been up the hill, both Maverick and Loves are open. We're hearing great reports for how those operations are going and we're hopeful, hopeful to see that in our fourth quarter sales tax numbers. So once again, really exciting there. Our home lighting contest has been announced, so please sign up with the clerk's office if you want to decorate your home. Get your blow-up Santas out in the front yard, put all the lights on your house, um, blinking or non-blinking, and get that signed up. Tours are gonna begin on Monday, December first. They're gonna run Sunday through Thursday for three weeks, so the community can come out Sunday night, Monday night, Tuesday night, Wednesday night, or Thursday night. To go up and see the lights, you'll be able to vote on your favorite house. You can ride often. You can have hot cocoa and, and hopefully candy canes. And, um, the prizes this year are first place, three hundred dollars. Second place, two hundred, and third place, one hundred. We want to thank our power and light department for sponsoring that contest. Um, we're also doing an upcoming, so we're sponsoring a business lighting contest. So if you have a business in town, all of our, these businesses we've been maintaining these wonderful relationships with, we've got two categories, best Victorian display and best window display. So we'll be running two different categories, one for Victorian display that matches kind of the look of Trinidad and then one for windows. Uh, we do have a secret panel that will be voting, of professionals that will be voting on those. And, uh, first place is five hundred, second place is three hundred, and third place is one fifty. Once again, thank you to the power and light department for sponsoring those as well. So, uh, business owners and homeowners, please participate. Get that holiday spirit out there and, um, and we look forward to the outcome of those contests. This past Thursday on November thirteenth, C M L hosted an all-day training for newly elected officials. It was attended by Mayor-elect Si Michaels and our council members-elect Tim Peters, Dan Rossetti, and Carmela Vador, as well as staff from our clerk's office, our city attorney and myself. It was all day, seven hours of training, so, um, I'll let them give you their impression, but our impression of it, from the staff side, is it was excellent and it was a great opportunity to get to know some of our newly elected officials. We're excited to see them, uh, taking seat in January. We're also holding some additional onboarding meetings with our four new officials over the next month. It's going to include city staff from our public safety positions, public utilities, public works and development, and of course, our city clerk, city attorney and finance officials. So that we try and prepare them to be up to speed in January to take over their new duties. And that is what I have for today.
Thank you for the very thorough update. I appreciate it. I did, sorry to put you on the spot.
That's okay.
I do have a quick question next to you. Do you know, um, the targeted opening dates for Allier and pickleball courts?
Allier will be in early January. We had a few weather days, you know, it was Christmas Day was the last when we did the contract, so it's gonna be pushed into early January. Pickleball courts are done except for two things. We're adding lighting and then we're adding concrete. We would have already had them open. The courts are ready, but they're not ADA accessible. So as you know, we're still under the D O J order because of the aforementioned government shutdown. We were not afforded the opportunity to close that case. We're hoping to do that by the end of the year. The city attorney's standing by to do that meeting. And once we close that case, we're really nervous about opening ourselves up for any issue. Um, so we could take those courts, we could open them, but they're not ADA accessible until the concrete goes in. We would have to tear the concrete up to put the lighting in, so the lighting is arriving. We're expecting the lighting to go up this month and then concrete will likely be poured first of the year. So we were really hopeful to have it open for the holidays. It's going to be first of the year to be fully ADA accessible. I know that's not exactly an exciting answer, but it is the answer.
The answer's the answer.
The answer's the answer.
Mr. Down?
Thank you, Mayor Proten, council members. Um, just a couple of things. The, the first thing I want to report on is, we had a, a municipal court day yesterday that incidentally was attended by city manager Marshall, who's current downtown there. And the reason I mention that is because traffic tickets are on a substantial uptick. I, I don't know what that stems from, but there were. I, I don't know what that stems from, but there were quite a few more traffic tickets in municipal court. And I guess the next docket day that we have, so I believe it's, I think, December fifteenth. I don't have a calendar in front of me and I can't see that from this far. Okay, good. Thank you. We already have a lot of traffic tickets for that day as well. So there is an uptick in, in traffic enforcement in Trinidad, which is a good thing unless you get a ticket. If you don't get a ticket, it's a good thing and it seems kind of, you know, appropriate and hopefully that will continue. I also wanted to tell you there were several people who were here on violations of the new camping ordinance. Almost all of them were homeless. And I want to tell you, I was able to resolve all those tickets. I think I had seven defendants on, on those. And what I did by way of a, kind of a group resolution, is I gave them a deferred judgment. They were looking at a three hundred dollar minimum fine. I was able to suspend down two hundred and seventy-five dollars of that. So they would pay a twenty-five dollar fine, forty dollars in court costs. And as long as they paid the sixty-five dollars, the remaining two seventy-five would be terminated and suspended upon their payment of the sixty-five. So that it was a ninety-day deferred judgment. So I just wanted to let you know that all reserve comment, right? I know you don't want my commentary, but you, you think, think of that in whatever you, you would like. I wanted to tell you that the gaming slash gambling operation on Santa Fe Trail is now out of business. It just, it kind of, just went away. Lastly, I want to say the C M L training that Tara referenced was a wonderful training. It was remarkably thorough. I think this is the first one they have done like this for elections. It was, it was amazing and like the breaks that everybody was given were like three minutes and four minutes. Yeah, you had to go to the bathroom, do whatever you had to do and kept back in four minutes, three or four, with a, with a really generous lunch time period of fifteen minutes. Everybody was paying rapt attention. It was, it was a wonderful event. As Sarah said, all of our newly-elected people were here and participating, so that was a great thing. The last thing I want to say is I want to profess my undying love and devotion for Karen Griggo. That's all I have.
Here, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms.
You got Karen.
So that will bring us to item eleven, adjournment. Is there a motion? So we'll, the second?
Second.
And the vote?
Tabano?
Yes.
Chu?
Yes.
Trill?
Yes.
Ogle Tree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
That concludes our meeting. Thank you guys for being here.